This regular board meeting of the Waco Independent School District is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I just really want to extend a warm welcome to those present and our television viewers. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy, sorry, make policy for the district. We're not here to do, make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I just ask that you would turn off your cell phones to silent if you have not already done so, and we appreciate the time you have taken to join us and for your interest in Waco ISD. Este junta regular de la Waco ISD está conmocada. Les extendo un amable bienvenidos a todos que le están presente en lo que son nos observan por televisión. También les quiero compartir que todos los conferencias están disponibles en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esta página pueden escoger su idioma así toda la información que fue discutida es disponible para todos. Por favor apájar su teléfono celular en la escala alguien le decimos el tiempo que compartir con nosotros en su entres en Waco ISD. We will move Agenda Item Number Two, Public Comments, to after Agenda Item Number Eight. Right now, we will go into our moment of silence. Please pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, meditation. Thank you so much. Just for clarification's sake, we have a lot of people signed up for public comments, and we also have a lot of students here. And so what we are going to do is the board will not vote on Item Eight until after we have heard public comments. Okay, moving on to special recognitions, we have our pledge leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visible with liberty and justice for
Good evening, Dr. Kincanon trustees. Tonight, we're going to start with our pledge leaders. Each month, one campus selects two students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at the regular business meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. For the month of November, Elise Rangel and Chris Sanchez from Hillcrest PDS Elementary were selected for this honor. Elise is in fifth grade and loves math and soccer. Her hobbies include playing video games, watching TV, drawing, and coloring. When she grows up, Elise wants to be a professional soccer player. Thank you to her mother Natalia Valderas for being here and sharing your wonderful daughter Chris is also in the fifth grade and loves reading and boxing. His hobbies include playing basketball and games. When he grows up, Chris wants to be an NBA basketball player. Thank you to parents Emma Zuniga and Omar Sanchez for being here and sharing your incredible son with us. And thank you to Principal Dean for being here to accompany these amazing students tonight. Next, we're going to recognize our Principal Leadership Institute. Region 12 has created a Principal Leadership Institute to enable campus principals, assistant principals, and district leaders to increase alignment, focus, commitment to excellence, and continuous improvement while building network opportunities with other leaders throughout the region. The program was created to strengthen leadership capacity and connecting theory to practice, discovering new methods for improving individual, group, and school performance, strategies for fostering a positive school culture, valuing diversity and communicating effectively with stakeholders, proven techniques for increasing personal growth and improving relationships with colleagues and staff, organizational processes that improve the learning and life of our students. Principals who attended the Region 12 Leadership Series that began in June 2022 were eligible to apply for the institute, and district administrators qualified for the institute with a participating principal. As part of the institute, participants will travel to Dallas and Boston to engage in classroom observations, leadership learning experiences, and conversations to explore a campus-based problem of practice. All expenses, including hotel, meals, and domestic travel during the ESC 12 Selected Travel Events, will be provided by the service center at no cost to attendees. Both the campus visits and observations, including time to converse and ask questions of campus leaders. The following Waco ISD leaders were chosen by Region 12 to participate in the Principal Leadership Institute. Next, we have our Community Partner Award. Each month, Waco ISD recognizes a community partner making a difference for students with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partners. The recognition celebrates the theme for the 22-23 school year Lead From the Heart and acknowledges the impact our community partners make in the lives of our students and staff. In November, the district is recognizing the Waco Rotary for the great contributions they bestow on Waco ISD. Here to accept the award for the Waco Rotary is the Executive Director, Kathryn Lowe. The Waco Rotary works with Waco ISD in various ways, including recognizing one senior from each high school for the Youth Citizenship Award that focuses on community service. They select one female and one male high school student from the district at the Rotary Youth Leadership Award. These students attend one-week camp with other Ryla winners from various high schools that focus on developing leadership skills and connecting with each other. The Waco Rotary recently partnered with Guaca on a literacy project by donating $2,700 to purchase 160 books focused on various healthcare topics for the Guaca library. Rotarians with a background in the healthcare field also plan to speak with the Guaca students to discuss the importance of literacy in the workplace. Thank you so much for everything that you do.
We will move on to Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kincanon.
All right, well, good evening. Have a couple of items to share with the board this evening. First of all, I wanted to talk about our GW Carver Student Ambassadors, and we have some pictures to share this evening. On November the 3rd, our student ambassadors enjoyed their first site visit to the construction site for their new school. After a safety lesson and introductions, the group of about 40 students rotated through four stations that included a briefing on site management for the build, observing the recently completed foundation pour, and learning about stages of the building process. Crew leaders answered questions from the ambassadors and taught students about the different trades and roles involved in the build. Among the tradesmen working with our students that day was an electrician named Salvador. You can see him there on the left-hand side. I had the pleasure of meeting him. Salvador attended both GW Carver and Waco High School as a student, and he is doing electrical work on both projects. He shared with the students how much pride he has in being a part of building the future for his community and our students. Gloria and her team are looking at scheduling the next event in December before the Christmas break. It was a lot of fun. I had a great time walking the site with the kids. It was great. The next item is Elementary Design Student Engagement Sessions. As a part of our ongoing elementary design process, student engagement sessions were facilitated by O'Connell Robertson during the first week of November. Each session included approximately eight to 12 students from various grade levels who participated in visioning activities and discussions about how they imagined their ideal new school. Hosted at Alta Vista, Kendrick, and South Waco, these sessions were all about the students and their input. However, there were additional campus staff members and district leaders who participated and listened in. The student sessions follow similar work that has been done with our individual departments and campus-specific teams to ensure that all voices are heard in developing a new Waco ISD elementary design. And it was a delight to hear from the students about what they enjoy and want for their classrooms, their libraries, and their outdoor learning and play spaces. I heard things like pink wallpaper, soccer fields, and lots of library books, and they were just such a joy to spend time with. And so thank you to O'Connell Robertson. Doug, thank you for facilitating those sessions. Last item I have is in regards to our PM snapshot data. October 28th was the official snapshot date, and that is the day that is designated by the Texas Education Agency as the capture date for demographic data for the 22-23 school year. Snapshot date is always the last Friday in October, and that's when we take our official counts that go down in the history for the school year. The data showed that we have 13,824 students enrolled this year. That's 262 students less than last year. 61% of the students enrolled in Waco ISD are Hispanic. 27.7% of our students are African-American. 8.39% of our students are white, and 2.44% are coded as two or more races. Additionally, approximately 89.65% of our students are economically disadvantaged, and about 23.39% are limited English proficient, excuse me. And I'd like to point out a couple of areas where our data is shifting. Last year, I pointed out the continued increase in our special education population from 8% in 2018, 2019, to 11% in 21, 22. This year, our special education population is 13.3%. And we think that some of that increase is likely due in part to a federal change which now requires dyslexia evaluations to go through a formal evaluation process within the Special Education Department. And so while completing a full evaluation for any student who is suspected of having dyslexia, our Special Education Department is finding more students with disabilities, regardless of whether or not they're dyslexic. So that's a number that we've been watching closely. Our bilingual program has also grown. It went from 4.77% last year to 6.89% this year, and that's an increase of 177 students. And that is by design. That's a result of our expansion of our dual-language program at the elementary school level. And you'll recall that we piloted a one-way dual-language program at Dean Highland Elementary last year, and we've expanded it to seven additional schools this year. And that program serves students in grades pre-K through five whose first language is Spanish. And so those are the highlights of that snapshot data. Everything's pretty much the same, except for those areas that I highlighted, and our enrollment is slightly declining still. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kincanon. Next, we will move on to monthly financial reports for the period ended September 30, 2022.
Information.
Information, okay. Any questions on Item 6A, 6B? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to Consent Agenda. Was there anyone wanting to pull anything from Consent Agenda? Yes.
I want to accuse myself from Item E.
Item E, great. Oh, thank you.
Pull G.
Item E, pull G. Okay, so let's do this. Why don't we vote on everything except for G with a recusal, Monica, from 7E? So we are pulling 7G, and Mr. Guillory is recusing himself. Okay, so I will present, or I will entertain a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented except for Item 7G.
I'll move that we accept Agenda as presented with the removal of letter G.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have, thank you, Mr. Vedania. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so none opposed, one recused, Mr. Guillory, and it passes. Okay, so 7G, allowance expenditure authorization to address equipment costs related to construction of GW Carver Middle School. Gloria, if you want to.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Kincanon, board members. This Agenda Item addresses an issue that has risen on the Carver Middle School. As the contractors working through purchasing the equipment, some HVAC equipment was not going to be delivered in time. The original people that agreed to provide it basically were not able to fulfill their commitment. So we had to find another provider, another equipment provider, that could provide this equipment within the time allowed. So while it does represent a significant increase in cost, it is within the allowance that we have established within the project for this kind of thing because we knew it could come up, and we don't anticipate any more of these types of cost increases because we're really close to being finished with all of that. As a value, we're getting a much better piece of equipment that will perform much better for the district than we had before. So that's the trade-off.
Okay, so before we move forward, Mr. Guillory, I just wanted to make sure that in order to kind of have this discussion, we need to put a motion and a second, and then the discussion can occur forward on this. So I will entertain a motion for 7G.
I'll move that we approve the allowance expenditure.
Okay, thank you, Ms. ISD. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Vedania. Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Please feel free to start the discussion.
The question I had, you talked about on here, pretty much it was two different things. It was, you were switching because of supply chain issues, and then you went down and said it was the wording inside this document, and then you went to say it was a better product. And so those are two different reasons that you gave. And then also, I wanted to know about the, I believe the amount on here is $478,994. And by switching companies, why did the amount there go up? And if you had a better product on the table, why didn't you go with that better product from the onset?
That's a good question. So the product that we're getting is way better than we would normally specify, but it's not available. The product we wanted is not available anymore. So we had, we were going to have air handlers supplied by a certain contractor, a certain equipment provider, and they had agreed to provide them. But then they basically backed out on their commitment, and we had to find somebody else. They did say they could deliver them, but it would be, their delivery date would be the fall of 2024, I'm sorry, 2023. So obviously, that's not in time to open Carver in August of '23. So we had to switch because they were not able to make that delivery due to supply chain where they couldn't get the materials they needed to build everything they needed to build.
There's.
Mr. Grant.
There's not a similar product on the market and available by another vendor?
There's multiple products available, and we evaluated multiple products from multiple vendors, and this was the only one that could make our delivery requirement.
So delivery date was the primary deciding factor?
Yes.
Once you made that decision, then you were required to purchase a more expensive, I'm assuming it has more capacity, more something?
It's just, it performs at a higher level. What we had before was very high quality, so I don't want to imply we didn't.
Sure, sure, sure.
But this is just a supplier that, you know, would normally wouldn't have to go that far to get what we need, but they just don't have it available.
Does this cost you time now, or is the project on time?
I'm sorry?
Is the Carver project currently on time?
On time, at this time. Right now, it's about two weeks behind schedule, and Core has a plan in place to catch up, which is not unusual in a construction project.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
My question, I guess, is about the escalation allowance, so that fund is there for any changes that happen in the projects, if you guys need to change anything like we are right now with the HVAC equipment. Is that what that allowance is for? What is that used for?
That's exactly what it's used for.
Any changes that are happening with the project, anything we need to do differently, we have a fund set aside to use.
And we have escalation set aside just for those kind of things.
And how much is left in that escalation balance?
Pretty much none. This will pretty much finish it up. But we have other allowance funds within the contract still, other contingencies. So we're not exposed in any way.
Basically, this was our only option to complete the project by August of next year.
Yes, sir, that's what I believe. I believe this is our best option to complete the project.
You could go with the original part and wait on it, but then you would have to wait on other trades to finish their work, which would slow down the project and possibly cost more money ultimately on subcontractors who are waiting to do the work. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I mean, we have this one, you know, basically cost we have to pay, but if we didn't, we would still have cost that we'd have to pay because we have a bunch of other contractors that need to do their work, and if we slow all them down, then they're impacted too. So this lets us maintain the schedule.
Do you know what the original budget was for the machines, anyway?
It was.
What percentage income, I guess, is increased? What percentage increase is this over?
It's about a 40% increase.
40%.
Mm-hmm. On just the equipment.
Right, right.
Yes, Dr. Kincanon.
I was just going to say, any kind of appliance that you buy right now, you're waiting on, and lots of things are costing more money with supply chain issues. So that's why you have allowances in these kinds of projects, and that's, so that's the request.
I have another question.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
I know you can't predict the future, but how likely is it that we'll have another issue like this? Because you said it's $478,994, and it almost wiped out the escalation allowance that's used to make changes. So what would be our plan if we run into another issue or a supplier doesn't keep their end of the bargain? How would we mitigate this situation?
Well, we still have some remaining contingency within the contract. We don't expect any more at this point, but if we ran into a problem like that, we would have to use the remaining contingency within the contract.
But we do have funds.
Yes, yes.
I have one last question. The HVAC system, it's in the latter part of the project, is that right?
Yes.
In the installation of it?
Right. Well, we need it delivered in March, so it's not that far from now. March, it needs to be delivered in March. We need the equipment in March. Because we have to have HVAC in and running, building all conditions so we can do the finishes inside. We can't paint, hang ceiling, et cetera, without the air conditioning on.
Is there any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the table, a first and a second. So I will call for a vote. This vote is for the approval of the allowance expenditure authorization for costs associated with changing the HVAC equipment manufacturer to achieve the desired completion date for Carver Middle School and authorize a superintendent to execute the AEA. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Vote.
Okay, it's everyone except for Keith Guillory who voted yes, and then Keith Guillory voted no. Okay, Ms. Barera, you are already here. So we're going to move on to Item Eight. Item Eight is Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Regarding the Award of Contract to Core Construction. regarding the award of contract to Core Construction for Tennyson Middle School. How we're going to do this in the public comment that we have moved is we will let Ms. Barera present. I will pause her presentation, allow for everyone who has signed up for public comment to speak. Then we will go through back into the agenda item. I will call for a motion, get it set in motion, and then we will have a discussion. So just to kind of clarify, so Ms. Barera, could you, you have the floor?
Okay, so consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the ward of contract to Core Construction for Tennyson Middle School. I'd like to review the process that the district's undertaken for the selection of a contractor to build the new Tennyson Middle School. In March of 2022, the Board of Trustees approved the competitive sealed proposal delivery method for the Tennyson Middle School project. Our previous two projects were delivered via cement-risked delivery method. And there are some key differences in the selection process. When you looked at your board packet this week, you probably noticed that the backup information for the Tennyson Middle School project is different from what you received on Carver and Waco High School. This is because, in a CSP proposal, the contractor proposes a lump sum to deliver the projects based on the requirements in the RFP and the contract documents. When they submit their proposal, they take into account all facets of building the project, including the schedule. The competitive sealed proposal process is first a competition. The Texas Government Code 2269 that we have to follow says, "The governmental entity shall select the offerer that submits the proposal that offers the best value for the governmental entity based on the selection criteria in the request for proposal and the weighted value for those criteria in the request for proposal, and its ranking evaluation." In order to make sure that all the proposers understood the process, Waco ISD Purchasing Operations and O'Connell Robertson conducted a pre-proposal conference on October 6th to present the project to prospective bidders. We had three general contractors attend, as well as several subcontractors. Both proposers, Core and Mazonic, were present at the pre-proposal meeting. During this meeting, Doug Dawson presented the project overview. Judy Monroe, buyer for Waco ISD, presented the bidding instructions. And I reviewed the submittal requirements, emphasizing that the information that the contractors included in their proposal was the, was what the evaluation team would base their evaluation on. We discussed the criteria and the weighting, and what the district was looking for in each area. During the pre-proposal meeting, a representative from Mazonic asked if the district would consider extending the completion date from April 26th to a later date, April 26, 2024, to a later date. They expressed concern that the project could not be built in the time allowed. We responded that the district needs a facility complete by the end of April to allow for furniture, fixture, equipment, installation, and a smooth transition for the campus. We said that if we decided to extend the construction time, we would issue this change via addenda. We did not change the date. We received the proposals on November 1st, and they were opened publicly and read aloud. Then the evaluation committee began the review process, including thoroughly reading the proposals and checking references. As we reviewed the schedule and Mazonic's approach, we saw that the proposed delivery date of August for the school building did not meet the RFP requirements. Waco ISD leadership discussed this issue and agreed that a delivery date of early August was not acceptable. For this reason, Mazonic's approach was graded at five out of 10 possible points. You can see on the proposal evaluation summary following your board memo, the selection criteria, associated points, and the points awarded. After we evaluate the proposals, the Texas Government Code has specific direction that we must follow. It says, "We shall first attempt to negotiate a contract with the selected offerer. The governmental entity and its architect or engineer may discuss with the selected offer options for a scope or cost reduction, time modification, and any price change associated." If we are unable to negotiate with the number-ranked firm, then we can go to the next-ranked firm. But we have to rank, only talk with the number-one-ranked firm. The code requires we evaluate only submitted information. There's no provision for clarification until after ranking and selection. At this time, we notified Core Construction they were ranked number one. And we wanted to meet with them to discuss cost-reduction strategies. During our meetings with Core, we were able to negotiate the contract amount to $67 million, which is reflected in the contract that's attached to your board memo. I'm open to any questions.
Okay, well, Ms. Barera, one, one second before we do the questions and discussion. Thank you so much. You know what? I was advised per our attorney, we're going to go ahead and entertain a motion to save discussion. Yeah, so we're going to go ahead and entertain a motion on this.
Then do-
Then do public comment. Yeah, we won't vote for it right now. This is just to open it up for-
I got a question. Is that our legal recommendation from our attorney that we do a nomination now? And why, why is that?
I think I have a question more about public comments. Since that's a separate agenda item, do, are we able to open a motion on this agenda item, stop it, and then go to a public comment?
Normally, the public comment would come before this motion, anyway.
So we can't do public comment first, then come make the motion and decide?
Correct, correct. I move that we move the public comments to before our motion, that we limit each of our public comments to three minutes, and that the board not engage the presenter with any questions like we traditionally do.
Just want to clarify, per board policy, everyone has three minutes, and we can't respond anyway, so we don't need a motion on that. But I do agree that we should have public comment first.
We have a, we have a first and a second on that, so let's, let's go with that. Let's, let's do that. It seems like it's the board's desire to listen to public comments before we, we start the discussion. So we'll go back to what we had originally, what I had originally said. Sorry for the confusion. Here we go. I will start with public comments. I need to switch back to my legalese over here. Okay, if we've had one or more persons speak, we've had more than one person, sign up to speak on one or more of the open meeting agenda items this evening. The board encourages comments about the open meeting agenda items from members of the public. Anyone who's signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with board procedures will do so in accordance with the law, board policy, and board rules. Board rules require that each speaker's comments pertain to an open meeting agenda item. Unless suggested by the presiding officer, comments by each speaker will, will be no longer than three minutes per the time limit from district's BED local. I will ask the board secretary, Mr. Davis, to be our timekeeper. Mr. Davis, you can let any patron addressing the board know when they've reached the end of their allotted time to speak. First up, we have Pam Cooper.
We are doing the time a little different this week. The timer will actually be on the screen. So make sure when you come give public comment, you're kind of looking up periodically. I'll still try to get on and give you a warning, then you're awarded.
Okay, I need to watch the screen and watch what I'm reading at the same time.
I'll warn you.
Dr. Kinkanen, President, Courteway, and School Board. My name is Pam Cooper, and I'm here tonight representing Greater Waco American Federation of Teachers. Our goal is to educate students and keep them safe. The safety of our students is the reason I am addressing you tonight. Tennyson Middle School is one of the schools that's going to have interior glass walls. There are still questions about the interior glass walls and the new schools being built. These are Tennyson Middle School, Carver Middle School, and Waco High. There have been numerous teachers and other staff that have voiced concerns about the safety of these glass walls. Teachers have indicated to me that they do not want to teach in these classrooms. They indicated that they would ask for a transfer to another school or leave the district. At this time, we're already short of teachers. Can Waco ISD afford to lose more teachers? Their safety is also at risk. The board has not shown that they would consider changing the designs for these schools. It was stated that time and money were the concern. There is no price that can be put on the loss of a life. The glass that is proposed to be used is safety glass. If a student were to throw a chair or a desk at the walls, it would shatter. Then the wall would have to be replaced. Has the cost of replacing a wall been calculated? Another concern is how other students will be protected in case of a severe weather, a tornado. Where do they practice duck and cover? They can't duck behind the glass. Teachers and other staff in the schools told me they did not know anything about these classrooms. They were never asked their opinions about the glass walls in the classrooms. Those that did know were fearful of speaking because of due to retaliation. Currently, TEA has, of November the 10th, proposed that all outside windows in the schools would be mandated to be bulletproof glass. Has anyone checked into the possibility that glass classrooms would not be acceptable? It would be extremely expensive to go back and redo these schools. I would like to thank all the teachers and other staff that came here to hear this concerned voice to our school board. And I speak not only for myself, but for my members, who are teachers, pairs, and staff in the Waco ISD. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Great.
Ms. Silva, Rosalinda Silva? You take your time.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Kinkanen, Ms. Courteway. I am Rosalinda Silva, also a member of the Greater Waco AFT, and a concerned citizen of this district. I also come to speak in, not in favor, but in favor of not building these classrooms in Waco High, Tennyson, and Carver. I have the same concerns that have been voiced to me by our members, who are, some are here with us, by friends in the district that are very concerned, and also have said, "If I have to go teach there, I'm going to have to leave, and I have to retire." Many parents have also stated that they are safety wary of these classrooms. They will also think of going to some of our charter schools, which we cannot afford to give our students away to our school board. Knows that our numbers are down, so is our monies to operate. I encourage you, we've heard this three times already, but I hope that with these presentations, with citizens starting to show up, that you will reconsider and hear. I'm not hearing that you are hearing us as the public that put you guys in those seats. We cherish each and every one of you, but I cherish more my students and my teachers, who I represent wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silva, appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have Stuart Parsons.
Hello, I'm Stuart Parsons. I own Parsons Roofing. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I really didn't want to go first. But I'm speaking on behalf of, you know, the decision to go with, you know, a local contractor, Mazonic, on the Tennyson School. Just a little bit of history with us and Mazonic. Our company goes back 75 years, and we've been working with them for the last 50. You know, we've seen them grow, and we've seen them, you know, do everything from building, you know, a world's only surf resort to many schools. And I am familiar with, you know, bid tabs, and, you know, we obviously bid, you know, this project. And I'll say this, we're not even, you know, considered for the roofing of it, so I don't have anything to gain. But, you know, to speak on the behalf, and, and what I say, the biggest, it's the most impressive thing I've seen. You've got a lot of supporters from Mazonic. I came to this school board meeting 25 years ago, and I didn't have anybody support me. But Waco Board, School Board has always, I felt, you know, made the right decisions. And, you know, this, you know, speaking of, you know, bragging about Mazonic, you know, it's a large project. And this last year, Mazonic did four projects for Midway ISD at the same time, well over this amount. I mean, we were part of those, you know, so, you know, I know they can handle the job. So, you know, I just, you know, y'all are, y'all are from Waco, East of Waco. This other contractor's not, you're, you know, the person they're working for is not from Waco. She doesn't know Waco. Y'all guys know Waco. And I think the best decision that y'all could make was keeping it local, you know, and supporting your city. That's all I got. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Mickey Roberts? Mr. Roberts?
I'm Mickey Roberts from Parsons Roofing. I've been with Parsons Roofing since 1976. Worked for Mazonic for probably the past 30 years, from roofing to drywall. And Mazonic is, you know, a family-owned business. They're a local business. They do a great job. They have great reputation. And on the Tennyson project, I would just highly recommend them. They're, you know, super contractor. You know, you can talk to them. They're local. If you have problems, they're right here in Waco. They don't have to go out of town or come from out of town to take care of any of your problems. So, anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Jeff Davison. Bless you. Mr. Davison?
Hello, everyone. I'm a Waco ISD teacher. I'm also a member of the Greater Waco AFT. And I would like to talk about the plans for the glass walls at the upcoming schools. When thinking about this, one thing that really came to mind is history. Where we are right now, downtown Waco, was the site of a terrible tornado in 1953. This building itself survived, and I'll quote here, because I was looking up the history here, "with mostly blown-out windows as its main damage." Considering that we have safety as one of our number-one priorities, if we have a building with mostly glass walls, where are the children going to duck and cover? We don't need another disaster saying 74- We don't need another disaster saying 74 kids at Tennyson Middle School died in a tornado. Perhaps there is a better material that we could use that would be safer. And I think that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Mr. Davison. I have the next up, Ed Mazonic III.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. In behalf of Mazonic Construction Company, we're very disappointed that we were not recommended to serve as contractor at Tennyson. I've been in the community taxpayer at WISD for 44 years, built schools for the last 40, 45 years. Waco ISD is without a doubt the most difficult school district to obtain a construction contract. We understand the CSP process. We understand CMAR. By design, your scoring criteria is slanted. I have never seen a CSP that only awarded 30 points for the price. There are always 50 to 70%. When you look at the scoring criteria, sometimes the scores are exactly the same, but it's subjective. These are subjective questions. They could be answered any way you want. They could be manipulated. Sometimes this happens at school districts. I'm not saying it happened here, but it certainly can be. We've worked in 10 different counties in the central Texas areas building schools, several of them award-winning schools awarded by the state of Texas AGC. So when we look at your scoring criteria and you look at quality in goods and services, what's 10 points are available, you give our company eight. That's subjective. It's interesting, they gave our competition the same. So why can't anybody get 10? Safety record. I'm on the state board of the Texas Mutual Workers Comp Safety Group. All of our employees have a 10-hour OSHA class. Several of my employees are here. We have never had death or fatality on any of the projects. 20 points are rated. We get 18. Obviously, somebody doesn't know how to rate a subjective scoring criteria, so they just give everybody 18 points. I don't understand why WISD can't work with the low bidder. There's gonna be some question saying that we couldn't meet the timeline, didn't agree to make a find. We are here tonight because we did not get a phone call. We are here tonight because no one would return a phone call. The procurement process here is very difficult to understand. A question came up, if we have any objections to the construction contract, that we need to submit those, which we did. Never got a response back.
Mr. Mazonic, I'm sorry, the time is up.
Well, I appreciate you listening. This is wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Mazonic.
This is wrong and it needs to be fixed.
Thank you, Mr. Mazonic.
Y'all can fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Mazonic. I appreciate it.
My name is Aaron Miner. I've worked for Mazonic Construction for the past 18 years, and I was a lead estimator for the new Tennyson Middle School project. I come to the Board tonight to discuss the award of Tennyson, not in protest, but to illustrate the desire for Mazonic Construction to build this middle school. I feel that Mazonic Construction is the most qualified general contractor to build this project. Number one, project schedule. I prepared a detailed bar chart schedule for Tennyson Middle School, included this in our proposal packet. A project schedule was not a requirement for the project proposal submission, but only to show our due diligence. I always prepare a project schedule prior to building a project, prior to bidding a project. It seems that the evaluation committee made an assumption that Mazonic Construction would not be able to complete Tennyson Middle School by the required April 26, 2024 date. Nowhere in our proposal packet did it state that we would not make this date. I feel like I would have been better off not including our schedule in our proposal. By submitting a bid, Mazonic Construction is agreeing to all construction, I'm sorry, all construction documents, plans, and specifications, including the specified completion date. In my 18 years at Mazonic Construction Company, I've never not finished a project on time, ever. Number two, on bid date, Mazonic Construction was the low bidder. Bidding a project like Tennyson Middle School takes weeks of preparation. During the bidding process, one thing that sets Mazonic Construction apart from the competition is the level of detail and effort we put into helping the design team find any errors in the construction documents. Mazonic Construction submitted over 90 questions to Waco ISD and O'Connell Robertson for clarification. In response, the design team, O'Connell Robertson, issued an addendum number two, which consisted of over 363 pages, including new drawings and project specifications. We put forth a great effort to ensure that we had the project bid accurately and competitively. We were the low bidder. Another note to point out, my team worked vigorously to ensure we would have as much participation from local subcontractors and vendors. If awarded this project, Mazonic Construction with confidence can say that 76%, almost over 76% of our total project based on dollar value will be loaded to local subcontractors and vendors. This equates to over $50 million that would benefit our local economy. This is a conservative number, so potentially could even be more. I appreciate the Waco ISD Board's time and attention to this matter, and I ask the Board reconsider the award of the Tennyson Middle School and allow Waco ISD administration to negotiate a contract for the Tennyson Middle School with Mazonic Construction Company. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miner. Okay, next up, we have Eddie Mazonic. Yes, I figured that out from the Edward and Eddie. Thank you.
Hi. All right, I'm gonna be a little bit of overlap, obviously, Eric and Ed, and have said several very positive and specific things. Mazonic Construction has a lengthy history of working with Waco ISD. We've worked on projects spanning 20, 25 years. It's taken a long time to build the reputation we have with this school district. I mean, we've worked on Waco High, we've worked on the former A.J. Moore Academy, Indian Spring Middle School, we've worked on all of the Guama projects, helped get that program off the ground, the Brazos High Credit Recovery High School, and most recently, the precursor project to this Tennyson Middle School project. We pulled off a monumental effort this past summer and were able to get half a dozen or entire dozen portable buildings online so that kids could have a place to go to school this fall in the existing Tennyson campus. That monumental effort was completed in six weeks, six weeks this summer. And we completed that project on time. We work hard on our reputation. Our reputation is really all we have, especially being a local contractor, which is why we deserve to get five points as it pertained to experience with Waco ISD. But as has already been pointed out in the board meeting tonight, how do you give a contractor that has been knowingly behind schedule more than zero points for experience with, working with Waco ISD? They have one project currently with Waco ISD and it's behind schedule. I don't know how that equates to getting three points out of five when we have a local contractor that has a 20-year reputation of working with this school district, multiple administrations, and we've completed all our projects on the scheduled time, and we get five points. That's duly earned. I think that the three points awarded to the competition is a little premature, given they haven't even completed their one project with the school district currently. Additionally, as has been stated, we're gonna have over 70% of local subcontractor participation. That's $51 million worth of local tax dollars that stay in this county, in McLennan County, in Waco, Texas, in the hands of local subcontractors, employees. They're gonna spend money with local businesses in Waco, Texas. Compare that to Carver Middle School. Only 30% local subcontractor participation. That equates to a minger $18 million. That's only $18 million that goes back into the local tax community that that money came from. And that doesn't even take into consideration the fact that there's been an additional expenditure that's been allocated for this project that's already been discussed tonight. You know, the other issue here, too, is that we have these local subcontractors, these guys stay in Waco, Texas. They live here. Their kids go to school at Tennyson Middle School. They go to Carver. They're gonna go to Waco High. Those subcontractors that we're gonna employ for this project have the utmost importance of the project and the schedule in mind. You're not gonna get that from somebody that's here today, gone tomorrow. So all I can ask is that if there's a recommendation to use Mazonic Construction for the construction of the Tennyson Middle School project due to a number of reasons, but most notably right now, that we're going to bring easily double the subcontractor participation from our local community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mazonic. Okay, Kate Paul Holt.
Kate Paul Holt, 110 Mecca Road, right up the street. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening, we've been accused of attempting to bully the Board of Trustees. That is exactly the opposite of our intent. We're trying to get your attention and have been for almost 25 years. The administration faces at this dais keep changing, but the results are identical. Construction of new schools goes to out-of-town general contractors, and the local folks get to remodel some old schools and do small projects. The point we're trying to make is quite singular. Every time you hire an out-of-town general contractor, they're gonna use fewer local subcontractors and buy from fewer local suppliers. The people who are getting hurt are your students and the parents of your students. We're asking you to help us. How are we, how can we create a better job ladder for them? In December 2009, a survey of McLennan County firms, over 200 jobs were lost between October 2008 and September 2009. These are not extrapolated numbers. These are straight-up with a 21% response rate. In effect, each time you hired an out-of-town firm for new construction, the parents of your students were put out of work. The 2008 bond program produced $155 million in bond permit, in building permits. Barely 31 million or 25% was local. Your message to your students is crystal clear. You're not good enough to build your own schools. Our members contribute $50,000 to Guama to help jumpstart your graduates' careers. To what end? We constantly, we're constantly asked for donations and freebies, yet when the paying jobs comes around, we're passed over. We're the taxpayers that fund this district, yet we do not get the work. One response I've received from a previous board member was, it was the staff's recommendation. When are you, as elected officials, going to direct the staff to make local contracting and all purchasing local priority? McLennan Community College is the gold standard of contracting, with almost 95% of their contracts and employees being local contractors. They were LEED-certified buildings. They win state and national construction and masonry awards, but your staff tells your board members that local contractors don't do the quality of work that you deserve. This has been a longstanding tradition at the college, way before my time there, and it should have been a longstanding tradition here. We know--
Thank you, Mr. Holt.
--we have been sold, and we don't buy it.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, Heather Lewis.
I'm a parent and a community member who lives here in Waco, Texas. I have children who attend Waco ISD, and as a concerned parent, I come on behalf of other concerned parents who are standing here today and asking that you not put glass walls inside of the schools that our children will be attending. I'm highly concerned as to why we are not considering the taxpayers', parents', and community members' opinions when it comes to where their dollars go and who they would have to see this project out. My concern is why are we pushing so hard to have a particular vendor to have this project completed? And I'm very concerned with the fact that we seem to have an alternate agenda that maybe is set aside or blind to others. But my concern is my children, and I'm a person, I will say, of style, and I believe that having style is something, a forte that I like to have. But when it comes to designing a building that considers the safety of my children, I must say that I'm not for this project. I'm not for it by this particular vendor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Excuse me, Maria Aguilar.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Kinkanon. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Maria Aguilar. I'm a mother of two graduates from this district and one son currently at Atlas Tennyson. I'm also a teacher for the district and a Waco ISD graduate myself, from Waco High School. This construction is very personal to me. When I voted recently and attended rallies, I was told that I would be heard and that I could come to you when I had a concern. I'm requesting that the construction decision to build glass walls be reconsidered for these campuses, Tennyson and Waco High. I say this having sat through a recent active shooter scare with a room full of freshmen, students who were scared and crying while we all hid behind a brick wall. Many will say it was a hoax, right? It wasn't real, but it didn't feel like a hoax when we were there, not knowing what was going on. I urge you, board members, to speak to those of us who were there that day. I can tell you personally, it was very scary. I know fellow teachers who have said that they will not be, they will not continue to work for the district if these walls go up. I don't want my son or other students or other parents to experience this traumatic event behind a glass wall. I heard a board member say that construction isn't gonna solve the active shooter problem, but I can promise you that none of you would wanna be hiding behind a glass wall while you wait to see if it's real or not. You would actually be just a perfect target for whoever's shooting to shoot right at you. I leave you with this. Imagine yourself at this very moment, being in a classroom and being told that there was an active shooter while surrounded by glass walls with nothing to protect yourself but desks. What would you do? Where would you hide? Where would you go? Please reconsider. And for those of you who weren't there and, you know, didn't experience this, talk to those of us who were. My kids are still, I'm saying my kids from school, are still very upset by all of this. So please reconsider it. Reconsider it. School's not what it was when we were in school. It's different now. There's a lot of discipline issues. There's a lot of things that go on that you guys probably don't all know about. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and thanks for allowing me to talk.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Okay, Ms. Hope Mustika.
So I guess you heard him, right? It's not about the destination, but the process. This process has been dehumanizing. It's been disheartening, disappointing. You've lied to us. You've made it seem like the glass walls were gonna be just a part of the building, just like Midway, not that they're entire glass walls. You've made it seem like it's better for our students to see a shooter killing them and their classmates than to wonder behind a wall what it's gonna be like. and their classmates than to wonder behind a wall what it's going to be like. You've casted doubt on our two board members who have been our advocates and said, "Why now?" To make us question their motives, when really I question yours. We had options for superintendents that were not only, not just local, we don't have to have someone from Waco, but someone who is embedded, who understands culture, who understands community, who understands trust-building, who understands that you don't just walk into a district and demand trust from people. You earn it. It reeks of privilege when it takes, teachers are required to come up here and cry for you to finally listen. We had Commissioner come up here. We had a JP come up here. And then you have the audacity to say, "We don't hear from anyone." Are they invisible? What makes them invisible to you? Why don't they matter? I question your motives. Open records requests have already been sent out today, more tomorrow, great information tonight. You're going to be exposed as to why these other contractors are preferred, why you aren't choosing local. I believe Trustee Gilley even asked our architectural firm at one point. He specifically said, "How are you going to prioritize local? How are you going to prioritize our people, our economy, our children, their parents?" Oh, that's going to be part of it. Should have known that that was a BS answer, but the process has been so disrespectful. What little trust people had in Waco ISD, which is very little, it's gone. You have a long way to go. And if you're not ready from this day forward to be transparent, to own the wrongs you've done, to be better, there's people like me who don't want to sit on boards and have more responsibilities, but we have to because look what you're doing. We don't want, we don't, people like me don't want power. We don't want authority, but we care, and we love our community, and we have conviction, real kind, not just the kind people lie about at church, okay? You, this is just the beginning. You're being exposed. Get honest. Get gone if you're not with it. It's changing. Times are changing. You can't pull the wool over our eyes anymore. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Mustika. I'm going to go ahead and take a five-minute recess. We will reconvene on Agenda Item 8. Thank you so much for hanging with us for a little bit. We'll reconvene on Item 8, so I will go ahead and entertain a motion to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the award of core contract to core construction for Tennyson Middle School.
I would like to move that the board goes into a closed session to get legal advice on this matter and then come back and vote on this agenda item.
Okay. Mr. Rusik, if you could approach the dais or the podium so we can... We have a agenda item, deliberate appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer/employee, hear a complaint or charge against officer/employee, consideration of personnel. Does that allow us to go into closed session?
That does not, but that's not the point. The board can lawfully, under the Open Meetings Act, go into closed session on any agenda item that is permissible under the statute, and on any agenda item where the board wants to seek legal advice, including this agenda item, then yes, the board can go into closed session for that.
Okay.
Personnel, one that you just read, does not apply to this.
Does not apply to this. Yes, thank you, sir. That was, so...
I second the motion.
Perfect. So we've got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. We're going to go into closed session, and we'll be back shortly, or not so shortly, but hang tight. From closed session, and we'll open it up to Agenda Item 8. Excuse me, let me pull this out. That is, let me see, read this here. That is entertain a motion for approve the award of contract for the construction of Tennyson Middle School to core construction as presented, and authorize a superintendent to execute the contract. I'll entertain a motion.
Before they motion, President Cordewig, I think we had a couple of questions for Ms. Gloria. Are you able to come to the podium, please?
Okay. So Mr. Davis is asking that we start discussion before we do our motion. So that is great. We will start that. Ms. Barada.
Okay.
Specifically on the grading, can you please explain to us experience doing business with Waco ISD? Masonic was awarded five points, Core was awarded three points. Can you explain to us how their process went?
Yes, and remember that these are average scores from multiple reviewers, but I can tell you that what contributed to Core getting to three is the fact that they are building the Carver Middle School, which is basically the predecessor to Tennyson. So that is valuable information. They have experience in this exact school type, so that's their experience with Waco ISD is with that same school we're getting ready to build. And the other thing is that, you know, they brought this, that Carver Middle School in on budget, which was a huge feat at a time when school districts all around were having projects over budget. So they've done good work for Waco ISD, but they haven't been here long, so that's why they didn't get a full five.
I think my follow-up question would be, so did it, did we look at both Core and Masonic at the same time? I'm just wondering how they're so close if we have a long history of working with one company and a project that hasn't been completed yet. I was wondering how were they scored so similar? So, and then my next question is, who was a part of the decision-making process? So who are those that looked at this and scored it?
So we scored each contractor separately. So we scored one, and then we scored the other. We didn't do them at the same time. Part of the process was Kevin Hafer, Assistant Director for Construction, Jared with O'Connell Robertson, Judy Monroe with Purchasing was involved, and myself.
Mr. Grant.
Were there three? I'm sorry, were there, you said there were... Three people or four people?
Four people.
Four people, okay. I got a couple of questions. One, were the criteria that were used for the CSP communicated to all the contractors before bids were taken?
Yes, they were.
Were the percentages that were allotted to each criteria, we heard it said earlier that 30% was given to price, was that known before budgets were presented? What criteria did you use? I noticed that in the price, there is a .3 differentiation. It's a really slight differentiation. In the experience, there's two points. In the project approach, there's three-point difference. How did you calibrate what that difference would be? It seems that there had to be some metric where you said, "We're going to take off one point for this, a tenth of a point for this." Can you help us know how you came to 29.7 versus just 29 or 26, those kinds of things?
So it's actually a math problem for that. The bids were really close. I mean, on a $67 million job, to have one at 67.9 and one at 67.3, that's really close.
1%.
So that's a very good, that's a very good showing, okay? So the percentage is so small, you take the percent difference and you multiply it, and that's, it just took off point, three points because they're so close on such a big project.
So that's relative to the difference in price?
Right. So if the next bid had been 75 million, you know, then it would have been a whole lot less points.
Ms. Izzadi.
Can you talk about the project approach scoring? That was 10 total possible points. Tell me, what does project approach mean? What went into that category?
So project approach means, and we've explained in the RFP, that it means how they're going to accomplish the project, how they're going to control escalation, you know, what is their strategy for doing the job so they can explain it to us? Because on an occupied campus, so we were looking at what are all the things that they're thinking of, they're going to use as they build this project. So that's what we're looking for. We're looking for, you know, this is how we're going to successfully deliver it to Waco ISD. So when we looked at Core's approach, it addressed many of the things that we asked them to address, but it wasn't necessarily a perfect approach, so it didn't get 10 points. I mean, it didn't hit everything out of the park. When we looked at Masonic's approach, which was very thorough, but it showed us getting into the building August 1st, and August 3rd, and August 5th, when our completion date was April 26th. And I've never had that happen. I've never received bids on a job where the contractor didn't bid, didn't show a schedule showing finished on the right date, so...
That's a question I have because in the comments time, it was communicated that it was showing to be completed on time. In our understanding, it's August is the delivery date, and you can't move into a school August 1st. Can you help us understand the difference between what was said and what we understand?
Sure. So what we received from Masonic in their proposal booklet was a detailed schedule, very detailed schedule by area. I mean, five pages or more, very detailed, and it goes through, and in each of these, it shows where they're complete. So if they didn't say it in words, they said it in their schedule, which was much more compelling, you know, to see that they would be finishing the school August 1st, substantial completion August 1st, which is not final completion.
I have a question. The other categories besides the price, is it a math problem that goes into those as well, or is it just subjective, like an opinion of whoever's grading?
I'm sorry.
So financial capacity, project approach, experience doing business, quality of good, qualifications of project team, safety record. Are there math equations that go with grading those categories, or is it subjective of the person who's looking at the information, or how is that decided?
Okay. On financial capacity, we asked Sherri Smith to evaluate the financials of both companies, and it's really a pass/fail. In other words, you wouldn't want to give a job to somebody that your executive director for finance says they don't have the money to do this job. So that's why they both got 15 points. They can both do this job. No problem there. Let's see, what else did you ask about? Quality, that came from their references, and that was, I mean, we just went through a one to five, and we asked that each reference to rank them, one to five, and give us a grade. So when they did, we just, I got all those collected of all the references I called, and that's what it came out to.
So you asked the references that they provided for a score?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that alone was, that, the references alone is what gave us the qualifications of project team? Is that what you're trying to say? What category was that for?
No, qualifications of project team is really about the people they put on the job. And they're actually the qualifications of the team, and we saw that both of the qualifications of the team looked really good. There wasn't a problem there. So I think they got the same score on that, but that was independent. You know, we just, they both looked good. We don't know them necessarily personally, so it's not like we have personal experience with those people. So they are new to us, or maybe they're newer to the company. So that's the things when we look at when we're evaluating team qualifications is how long have they been with the company? You know, what did they do before? You can look people up on LinkedIn and see where they came from. I mean, so we do all that to see about the qualifications of a team.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Izzadi.
Can you talk to why that April date is important?
Well, it's important for several reasons. For one thing, we don't want to cut ourselves too short on having time allowed for things to come up that we may not foresee. So, you know, we want to be able to adjust that date if we need to and not get ourselves in trouble with getting moved into the school. Can we move into a school early, I mean, later than that probably, but you've been to Tennyson, right? They've been to Tennyson, they're living in the portable village, they're having some real challenges. We want to get them out of there as fast as we can, and we want to smooth the transition for that campus as we can possibly have. And the more time we have to plan it, to be intentional about everything, to help the teachers, to, I mean, we're going to move everybody out, so we're, we've got a lot to do in the summer, and we want to make sure that when teachers come back, their rooms are ready and they're not stressed out about things aren't ready.
And the way this competitive sealed proposal works is that the companies are judged on the bids. What they submit, the paperwork they sent to you, that is how we judge what they are going to do.
Yes.
If the members of the committee who decided this were picked by the superintendent, or how did that committee form?
Well, yeah, we discussed it.
Okay. I have another question for Peter, if you don't mind. Coming up, in public comment, it was said about using local contractors and subcontractors, and that's something that had been advocated for on several occasions. I just wanted you to give us a brief understanding of legally how far we could go with having a requirement or a category on local contractors.
For a construction project or a school district, okay? So it's narrowed down because there are other things, other kinds of governmental entities, and other things than construction projects where it might well be legally permissible to look at the location of the vendor, the supplier, the contractor. For construction contracts for a school district, you've got to follow Chapter 2269 of the Texas Government Code. You have to. When you look at the language in 2269, it's got a number of different construction methods that the district has to pick from. This board, as you will recall, picked the competitive sealed proposal method for the Tennyson project. Regardless of what method you pick, 2269 then tells you the criteria that you have to use, right? And even though it uses the word "may," consider the very scant authority that's out there, and there's not a lot, makes it clear it's really not permissive. Those are the things you get to look at, and whether or not a bidder, a proposer, an offer, whatever term you want to use, is a taxpayer in the district, whether they have an office in the district, they have a principal office in the district, anything like that, that's not something that, in my opinion, a district required to operate under 2269 for a construction project, that's not something the district can tell everybody in the RFP, "We're going to give you extra points if you're local, or we're going to detract points with whole points from somebody that's not local."
Just wanted to clarify, so even if we wanted to, as a board, require that part of the evaluation is whether a contractor or subcontractor is locally owned or not, it would be illegal for us to do so? So that's why we didn't do so?
There's nothing in the statute that specifically says that it is illegal. However, when you look at, again, and there's not a lot of authority out there, but when you look at the authority that is there, going back to an Attorney General opinion from 1992, and then the few court cases that are out there, in my opinion, any school district that tries to do that puts themselves at risk that whoever is not local and loses in a CSP process on the points... puts themselves at risk that whoever is not local and loses in a CSP process on the points because they're not local to somebody that is local runs the risk of getting sued under Chapter 2269 for the district having not followed 2269.
My last question, I honestly don't even know who this is for, but y'all will tell me in a second. Where is the discrepancy coming in? We've heard in public comment that they gave a plan that would end on the recommended date, and then we're hearing that Mazonic didn't give a plan. So where is the disconnect coming from? Which one happened? What was the disconnect? What was the miscommunication?
I can't answer that because I'm looking at, I look at the proposal, and I have a very detailed schedule that shows August 1st. So that's only, that's all I have.
Ms. Pereira, I have a question. Okay, so what has been said in public comment was schedule, that they submitted, Mazonic specifically submitted a schedule, and that Core did not, and that that was basically held against them because they submitted extra paperwork. Is that, what was, did they get dinged because they had a schedule and Core didn't?
They got dinged because they had a schedule that showed them finishing after the desired completion date.
So did Core also submit a schedule that showed that they would complete the project on time?
They did not show a schedule.
So, okay, so Mazonic...
I'm going to have to ask everyone just to hold on, hold on. We're getting to the bottom of everything, just...
So Mazonic issued a plan that wasn't required for them to include, and they were dinging points, and Core didn't give you guys a scheduled date of completion?
Sorry. Could you repeat your question, Mr. Davis?
Okay, so I'm asking, did Core give you a planned completion date?
No, they did not take exception to the completion date in the RFP. And a schedule was not a requirement. A schedule is great, and it's a great part of an approach, but it was not a requirement of the RFP.
But the completion date was?
The completion date was.
So if you submitted an RFP, that means that you are saying, "I will do this by this date."
Right.
So did both of those, did both Mazonic and Core do that, or only Core? Did Mazonic submit a RFP with a finish date that was in line with what we wanted?
No. They submitted a schedule, a detailed schedule in their approach that shows them finishing August 1st.
Can we see a copy of that?
Yeah. Sure.
Why are you getting, I have another question while you're, you can take your time, but earlier in public comment, it was a comment made that they were waiting on a callback?
Oh, yeah. Can you hold, can you hold on one second so she can answer? Yeah, just give her a little time to get the actual paperwork before us, so that we can actually take a look at this particular comment first, and then we can move on to the next. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Pereira. I'm going to go ahead and just pass this down in case people need it. And Mr. Davis, you can now ask Ms. Pereira.
Yes, I just remembered a comment from, during the public comment section where there was a comment made that they were waiting on a callback or a follow-up conversation. So what happened with that process? Was it a follow-up conversation? If it didn't happen, why didn't it happen? And I guess what was the goal of that follow-up conversation?
That's a good question, Mr. Davis. The process doesn't allow us to make a call after we've received our proposals. We have to evaluate what they submitted and then rank, and then we can only make a call after we've made a selection or the highest, we have the highest ranked proposer. Our documents say that during the active proposal process, the bidders are not to contact the school board, they're not to contact any staff members, they're not to contact anybody during an active proposal process, except the purchasing people. They can talk to the purchasing people. And if there's any issues, they would come to us. So we couldn't call them back. I was not able to, I couldn't do that, and staying compliance with 2269.
Got you. And I see the dates that you showed us where it was the 8-1 and the 8-2. So did both Core and Mazonic, did they have to give you an absolute finish date of April 24th? So whatever, 26, I'm sorry, that you, that, you know, the administration recommended, that they have to give you a for-sure yes on that date? And if so, did both Mazonic and Core do it? Did they both give you an end date of the 26th?
No.
No. So the only end date that Mazonic offered was the August 1st and 2nd?
Yes.
Now, oh, yeah, go ahead. Yes, Mr. Grant.
May I ask a question of somebody in the audience?
I'm sorry. Okay. Sure.
You mind coming up?
Yep, built a schedule. Building budgets are hard, building schedules are harder, keeping them are even harder. This is a very, very detailed schedule, very, very, very thorough. It does show full completion date at the very start of school.
If we were awarded this project, we will finish this project by April of 2024 in the RFP. This is a hard bid project. At the time of the bid, I did not know who my team members, who my local subcontractors were going to be. After 2 o'clock, bids are turned in. We found out we're low bidder. We met with our local subcontracting team in my office all next week. We thought we were going to be awarded the project because we were the legitimate, we were the low bidder.
I got a question. That's not my question. My question is, when you submitted your offer, when you submitted your proposal, did you know that the...
Yes, sir. By submitting our proposal, we are agreeing to the contract terms that were submitted or shown in the RFP.
April, correct?
April 26th of 2024, yes, sir. We did not take any exception to that finish date at all.
Your schedule, though, shows a different completion date, correct?
Yes, sir. That was not a requirement as part of the project submittal, but it was to illustrate how much we wanted to do this project for Waco ISD.
It seems, it seems pretty clear, though, that the time that was put into this means that there was a lot of thought into how long this project would take you. And what was submitted, I just want to be clear, what was submitted on this date was August, the very beginning of school?
That is correct.
Okay.
We have worked on multiple projects where we moved districts in within 30 days of a completion date. To finish this project, 180,000 square feet, is going to be a challenge to do in 16 months. Why rush it? Why rush it? Quality matters. We want to build a school...
Of course.
...that we are going to be proud of. And again, we did not take exception to the date that was published in the RFP of October 26th, 2024.
But you did take exception to the date that we requested of moving to?
No, sir. No, sir. I published a schedule that's fluid. Schedules are fluid. People change their schedules all the time. And you can ask anybody sitting in this audience that works for us. We pay our bills on time, we treat people fairly, and we're going to find a way to move Waco ISD into this school by that published date of April 26th, 2024. We did not take exception to that date.
Was that communicated?
We did not receive a phone call.
No, no. Was that communicated by you that said, "We can meet the August, the April deadline"?
By submitting a bid and not taking exception to that date, yes, sir.
Do you see where it's awfully confusing?
Yes, but the competition did not take the time and effort to put a schedule together. It took me...
Was it asked? Was it a requirement of the submittal?
It was not a requirement of the submittal.
Okay.
At all. We did that for our own due diligence to make sure that we can build a project on time.
Okay.
I have a question for Gloria.
Thank you. You can, we'll get, thank you so much.
The question that I have is the schedule, he talked about the schedule being fluid. Is that, is that something that would be common, like at that part of the process? Hey, we're going out for this bid, we're going to start trying to piecemeal together a schedule? Is that a normal part of the process, or is that unheard of? Or would, would, I guess, raise the red flag if they did submit and agree to the date of April 26th?
In my experience, I've never had a contractor submit a schedule in a proposal that they didn't intend to follow. So it's really hard. I mean, they really made the case for August 1st. I've never had that happen. Every time I've gotten a schedule from a contractor in a proposal, it always shows the desired completion date.
Ms. Pereira? Oh, sorry.
How many times have you done this? It's a serious question.
50?
Okay. And I'm going to ask a question just because I need to have this out there. You have not, have you been given any inducements by Core Contracting?
No.
Have you been offered any inducements by Core Contracting?
No.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Had Mazonic not submitted a schedule to you, would that have affected their score?
Well, if I didn't have something, six pages of something that said they were going to finish it on August 1st, yes, it would have.
And how would that have affected it?
Then they wouldn't have gotten a better score on their approach because their approach was graded down because they didn't meet our needs.
So I have a question. The project approach, Mazonic got a 5, Core got a 3. So we're saying if they had submitted this learned, required document, that they would have scored better and essentially got the higher bid. So I was wondering why, if that's the only issue, why would it go and ask or get clarification? Is it because we legally couldn't on the date? Or, and to me, if they're agreeing to the date, why did we think the schedule wouldn't change? If they're agreeing and they're saying, "April 26th, we'll have this project done", even if the schedule isn't matching, they're agreeing contractually to have it done by April 26th?
But that's not what they submitted on proposal bid day.
I got it, yeah.
Mr. Grant, can I, can I ask a question, Ms. Pereira? Okay, so just for clarification on this RFP process. RFP process, and help me understand how this kind of works. The RFP process, all the criteria, you basically meet with everyone and tell them what specific, go through the rubrics, specific things. You give them a schedule of when to submit, the deadline during the evaluation period. You know, so one of the things was there was no callback. You know, you didn't call them. Because of the way that this is a competitive sealed process, can you please, in the RFP, was it stated that you could not have contact with them? Did they know that beforehand?
Yes, it's in the RFP.
Okay, and then, I mean, I'm kind of with Mr. Grant. I'm like, how, if you pull out a six-page schedule, do you just toss that out and say, "Okay, you've done six pages of work, and now we're just going to toss out that schedule and not take a look at it and assume that you're going to finish by April 26th"? I mean, that's, to have that kind of detailed work kind of states intention and deadline.
To me, when you build a schedule, you start with an end date in mind, and you work backwards from there. That you know that the project needs to be done on X date, and then you figure out how much time it takes to do this, 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 and this, and then you just back it up. And from there, there becomes, can it be done? Can it not be done? And if it can be done, then you stick with that date, and you say, "We will begin on X date." If it can't be done, then that becomes self-evident. I can't comprehend submitting a plan with an end date that is past our timing if putting your best foot forward says the April deadline is the deadline. You know, I have gotten in trouble with my father before for saying too much, right? If I'd have just kept my mouth shut, I might have gotten away with something. But when I realized I said that I couldn't do it, you know, and my story fell apart, then the truth came out. I can't comprehend not putting an end date on the schedule that's submitted of the date that we requested. It's just a hard thing for me to get behind. It's not a matter of dinging you because you submitted something. It's, if you'd have submitted something with the April deadline, it would be an open and shut case, and we'd be out of here, right? It was, it was a tell of what your intentions are. And that's my, you know, legally, we can't give any points for somebody being local. We just can't. And then the other component is, is timing. And can you, can you, I got a, yeah, I see you shaking your head.
Before, before you ask that, could I just make one statement?
Hold on, one second, hold on, one second, one second, one second. Let's let Mr. Grant finish, and then we can give you the floor, Mr. Davis.
I just said, I wanted Gloria not to have to sit back down and then get back up.
Oh, I'm sorry, what? Well, it's, I think she's fine. I think she probably wants a break. Okay.
Can you explain to me the rationale for submitting a completion date schedule of August of going through the time of saying, "This is everything that has to be done, and the completion date is August", if you knew that was outside of what was asked?
I resubmitted a schedule that would meet the date to O'Connell Robertson's.
Can I ask a question? When was that submitted? Was that within the RFP window or outside of the RFP window?
That was on December 1st, last, I'm sorry, on, on December 1st, last Wednesday, as requested.
The window, I believe, for the RFP, Ms. Pereira, closed November 1st.
That is correct. So the next Wednesday after the RFP was submitted, I resubmitted a schedule that met the date.
You said that was, you were asked to resubmit that? By who?
Y'all, and I'm sorry. I am taking this personally because I built this schedule. It's because of me that now we're having this big discussion that we may not be awarded this project. It frustrates me that right now, currently, y'all have 180,000 square foot middle school at Carver ISD that was awarded for an additional $1.3 million over Rogers O'Brien back on October of 2021. And tonight, y'all just approved them for an additional almost half a million dollars. I have never stood in front of a school board and asked for that much money. I've never asked for additional monies to complete a project on time. I'm sorry, but because of something that is realistic, that I spent, I don't know how many working days on, met with my team, we are being dinged on because we submitted too much information.
It's not the information that you submitted, it's the date of the...
Yes, sir, I understand that.
If you just submitted April, end of April, you'd be sitting here with a check in your hand.
I'm just wanting to get clarification.
I can put anything on a piece of paper that anybody wants to read. And I can, I can, I can, I can build that schedule and make it look however y'all want, but right now, in today's economy, here we are paying half a million dollars for additional HVAC equipment? Like, what? That, that doesn't make any sense to me. I have never, and I've been with Mazzonick Construction for 18 years. I was born and raised in Waco, Texas. I went to Conley from kindergarten through 12th grade. I have young men standing in this room right now that are depending on this project. They have kids in this school district. They live here, they spend money here, and I cannot believe I am having this conversation right now. I submitted a very accurate bar chart schedule, but I am telling you, if we awarded this job, we will meet that RFP. We did not take any exception to the date that was published in the RFP by Waco ISD. And I'm sorry, I submitted a bar chart schedule that I spent a lot of time away from my family and kids on, but it's because I want this project. We want to build this project. We were low bidder. My number on bid day was $67,300,000, and the competition was $67,900,000. And while they got a phone call to lower their number, $900,000, and I did not receive a phone call saying, "Hey, your schedule's not in line. Can you help me out with that? And do you think you can lower your number to $67 million?" I'm standing in front of y'all tonight that we would have lowered our, our number by half a million dollars to keep this project local.
Thank you. I have a question, Ms. Barera.
I had a question for him before we go. So, yes, my, my question...
One second.
For you is, you said you submitted another schedule.
Yes, sir.
Who did you submit this schedule? You said you were asked, who asked you to submit another schedule?
I sent this to Jared Sturzinger with O'Connell Robertson.
What date specifically did you do that?
That was on Wednesday morning.
Or actually, actually, where Gloria?
On November the 9th.
I'm trying to get clarification on, because you, I'm assuming you just didn't wake up and decide to send a new schedule. So I'm wondering how, what made you create a new schedule, and who asked you to send a new schedule?
So, when we were low bidder, we started meeting with our subcontractor team that we knew was going to receive contracts from us. So I was already working on that schedule, finiting it, making sure that we could meet these dates. I received a phone call from Jared Sturzinger around 8:00 a.m. I don't know exactly. I mean, it might have been 8:03, 8:05 on November the, again, Wednesday, November the 9th. Told me the schedule did not meet their requirement date. So I said, "I am working on it currently, and I will submit another schedule." Thank you for the phone call.
Okay. That's what I need a clarification on. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Barera, I apologize, I don't have, I know that you guys sent the RFP to us. I didn't have a chance to download it. Could you explain the window for the kind of open enclosure for the RFP? Because I feel like it was in October.
It was November 1st. That was, the, it was issued for bids in September, late September. The pre-proposal meeting was October 6th, and then the bid date was November 1st.
So the bid date was, so basically, everything was closed after November 1st?
Yes.
November 1st was a hard deadline, sealed bid, and then it's going into evaluation. So, okay, that is, that's helpful to know for clarification.
Why would we call and ask for a new schedule after? If we just, we just talked about a November 1st deadline, so why would we wait on the 9th to ask for a new schedule that wasn't even part of the graded rubric in the first place, if it was not going to be relevant to the discussion anyway? That's why I'm kind of having confusion.
So first of all, the district did not call. And I talked to Jared about this specifically, and I said, "Jared, did you ask for a new schedule?" And he said, "No, I did not." He said, "I told them their schedule was not compliant." But he did not ask for a new schedule. Apparently, Mazzonick sent a new schedule to Jared, but I have never seen that schedule. Jared did not send it to me or to anybody at Waco ISD.
And we haven't, just to get clarification, we haven't got a schedule from Core. So we just have, because they were, for the RFP, at the RFP has the date of April 26th, we're going off of their word and their reputation, but they haven't submitted any kind of schedule. We don't know what their plan is, what subcontractors they're using. It was just basically off the fact that they submitted to, to get the bid.
Yes.
Last thing.
Yes.
You said you had a committee of five, and a number of, a number, four? There's a committee of four? And a number of them were from O'Connell Roberts?
One.
One was from O'Connell Roberts. How many was from the district?
Three.
Three from the district. And I, I go back to the experience of doing business with Waco ISD. I have, I have a few issues with the criteria. It's forced the low, able to low bidders, speaking of the local company, and also their experience with Waco ISD. And the experience that we had so far with, with Core has been, you know, like, like half a million dollars today, behind on schedule. And so that's, I don't see how they receive that five and, and...
Well, that, um...
I still don't see that.
I'd like, just like to elaborate a little bit. In the CMT risk process, as they go through the project, they, they're buying out the project, and there's usually money that is returning back to the district. So there is additional funds that are coming back to the district, but because this is over $100,000, it had to come to the board for approval. So that's why we're bringing this for approval. But there is, there is other savings within the contract that Core has generated during buyout that more than offset this. But because it's a change of over 100, over 100,000, we have to bring it to your attention and get your approval.
This will be my last comment. I just, the issues that I see is, is with the graded rubric. That, just like Trustee Gilery said, the experience with Waco ISD, I don't understand how you get three points if you've never completed a project at Waco ISD. I don't understand that, especially when the other company has years of experience in several projects that they've been able to complete on time and budget in the district. And I definitely, I'm most borderline unfair with the schedule, because we don't have a schedule from Core. So we don't know what their process is or what they, what methods they will use or what subcontractors they were using. They're probably working now to figure out what they're going to do schedule-wise as well. So for that not to be a graded criteria, but have so much of an impact on the, the bid process, I just, I, I don't really understand. If it, if it, I think if, if the schedule is that important, then it should have been, it should have been its own line. It should have been number eight. And they should have been both, they both should have submitted a schedule, and then they both should have been graded. So that, that kind of is a little disheartening, especially because either one of those categories would have made a difference going the other way. So as, as far as, I do want to say again, we definitely are advocating for locally-owned businesses to be used during this process. I think we heard 50% of Carver Middle School's project is, is local subcontractors. I think she told us 60% of Waco High's project is local contractors. But I am disheartened with this, that a schedule that wasn't part of the selection process weighed so much on the decision-making. I'll say that, and I'll leave it there.
I do, thank you, Mr. Davis. I do think that with the work in detail of the schedule, I mean, I think Mr. Grant's right. You work backwards. You get your end date, and you work backwards and see if it's possible. And that is, I agree with Mr. Davis. We are, I would say probably everyone on this board is advocates for, advocates for local contractors, local businesses. We cannot require that in the RFP legally. If it was something that we probably could, I think everyone would be on board, so to speak. Well, I can't speak for the board, but I know that I would be happy to do that, but that is not a legal, we have no legal standing in that. Ms. Barera? I don't even know what I'm going to say. I mean, I think the schedule said August 1st. There was obviously a lot of work that went into that. The RFP clearly stated April 26th. Does anyone have any further discussion?
I have one for Peter. So when you were reading statutes, when we talked about the statutes earlier, you, you brought up how we're, how we're kind of locked into the committee's decision. Is that, or do we have other options on the table?
As far as tonight goes, the agenda item is to vote, if there's a motion in a second, on awarding the contract for Core. I don't think legally, the board can do anything tonight other than vote on that agenda item if the board chooses to vote on it. If the board chooses not to vote on it, then you take no action on this agenda item. You just don't. So when you say locked into it, that's a separate issue from what the board could potentially do tonight, right? Only thing the board can do tonight, if there's a motion in a second, is vote on the agenda item.
If, if we voted to not award the contract to Core, would we have to start the process and offer an invitation of bids all over again? Or could we go to a number two?
Based on the information I've been provided, I think that if the board chooses to not give the contract to Core, or decides they don't want to do that, I think you got to start over, because the language in the contract is, you negotiate a contract with the highest-ranked offerer. That's Core. You've negotiated a contract with them. For whatever reason, the board doesn't want to enter into that contract, that's the board's choice. But I don't think you can then say, "We were unsuccessful in negotiating a contract." Because it's not because you haven't been successful in negotiating a contract that the board would not want to do this. It's for some other reason, whatever reason that might be. And I think at that point, the risk to the district is eliminated only by starting the process over, as opposed to negotiating with second-ranked proposer.
Could we take no action on this item, do more research, and come back and make a decision whether to award Core with the contract or to start the process over? Could we take no action tonight to have time to get more clarification? Or how does that work?
That's, that's the board's decision. Absolutely. The board decides, nobody's going to make a motion, or a motion's made and it dies for lack of a second. You take no action on this agenda item. Obviously, this board, the district, the community is intensely interested, appropriately so, in the Tennyson project. You're going to have this on an agenda item for a special call meeting or your regular meeting in December, in some fashion, I would anticipate. So if the board decides not to take any action on this tonight, absolutely, you can have an agenda item for a special call meeting or your regular meeting in December to take this matter back up.
And the quickest that could be taken back up would require, is it a 10-day notice?
72 hours.
72 hours.
We'll start meeting at nine o'clock.
Right.
Weekend, then yeah, 72 hours.
We need a motion to not take action on this item? Or how, how was that work? We would just go on to the next agenda item?
President already called for a motion. Nobody's made one.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Vedanya.
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Iazetti. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those who are opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. So it passes a four to three. Let the record show that Mr. Grant, Mr. Vedanya, myself, and Iazetti, yea. And it would be Mr. Ochoa, Mr. Gilery, Mr. Davis, nay. Okay, we are going to go ahead and move agenda item. Number nine, review and discuss opportunity culture program to our December meeting. We have announcements.
Good evening, President Cordawig, Superintendent Ken Cannon, and board. Tomorrow is an early release day for the district ahead of the week-long Thanksgiving break. The district will be closed November 21st through the 25th, with students and staff returning on November 28th. It's also really exciting to still be talking football as we head into Thanksgiving break. That's a really tremendous accomplishment. There'll be a community send-off for our bi-district champs, the UHS Trojan Football Team, tomorrow at 12:45 in front of the school, as they head to their area-round playoff game versus Fort Ben Marshall at Buffalo Stadium in Giddings, Texas. Kickoff is at 7:00 p.m., gates open at 6:00. And then also tomorrow, plenty going on before Thanksgiving. The Greater Waco Advanced Manufacturing Academy, Guam, will be hosting a ribbon-cutting for their new computer-integrated manufacturing or SIM system. Come out to Guam at 2:00 p.m. tomorrow to celebrate the state-of-the-art system for machining, welding, and robotics students, and you'll get to see a demonstration from some students. So I hope you all have a very blessed Thanksgiving.
Yeah, and so we just want to wish all of our staff, all of our teachers, our students, their families, a very happy Thanksgiving. I hope you get to enjoy time with family and friends. And with that, we are adjourned.